I wish that was the same thing.
Why is it that they don't have to go through?
No, it's the same thing.
Why are calling today?
Well, I'm all mad for calling.
See if they can switch them.
Why?
Later.
Another chapter.
And then some.
I mean, you see, you see some technicals.
No, it was never good.
A little bit, yeah, come on.
Yeah.
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 Yes, yes, before he pressed that.
I got security.
Yeah.
The predict and that might press down.
Yeah.
Close.
I have looked.
Five figure over the record.
Five figure.
Five figure.
Five, six.
So you just want to be long form.
That's it.
You break.
Light picture.
Well, if he has to go for each one of them.
My goals should have wiped out the whole place before highway six.
You're talking.
You want to just.
Some work to do out there, okay?
You made a lot of calls.
A lot of calls.
We're all that gas.
Creek.
They piled up somewhere new.
Well, I think there's more dirt really out there.
I saw one guard road anyway.
What was it, a bridge?
An old, which is our creative office, just over the dock, was correct.
Yeah.
I would think it'd been a bridge.
I think it's just.
Chuck the road out there near.
It'd been a bridge.
It'd been a bridge.
Wouldn't have been any resistance.
That's what it is.
All the water tried to get in that one hole. How do you get a train?
It's good.
It's good.
Do you like that?
Yeah, it's good.
Did you go with the harness?
No, I didn't get into it. My granddaughter, an accident, she fell on this one. And we were at Cook's last night, it was six thirty. Six, six thirty.
You break my flower.
Honestly, I'm so.
I'm, I'm.
I'm going to thank you now.
Thank you.
I'm on a plate right now.
Hey, second question.
Yeah.
So you have time.
Please, one more time here.
There you go.
Okay, I guess it's time to call meeting order a little past time. It's scheduled for one thirty. It is sixteen minutes until the hour two o'clock. This is Monday, June sixth, twenty sixteen. It's a call meeting. I will note that all members of the court of present that the reading posted the matter before the time was wired. It's convenient for that plan. If a case is.
That's great. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you give us. We thank you for the rain. We ask that you slow the rain down for just a little while. We thank you for our troops overseas. We provide for them and you protect them for us as they fight for us and our country and our freedom. We ask that you be inside of us and help us make the right decisions for this county and oversee us. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the big Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Senator. Item number three, public comments, announcements, presentations. The things that I have for announcement would be the voting member application that I received. Brazos Waterplanning Group G, that takes in the majority of Young County. There's a little bit of Young County that's in Brazos B, that's in Waterplanning Group B. There's also an open nomination for a couple of seats over there in that. I think all of those are in here, a packet. And then we have, I put in there, the governor declaration. Disaster declaring thirty-one Texas counties the nearest to us is Alpena that they have declared. Any other comments? One more comment about the food truck event. I guess it was a big, having their biggest success. There were a lot of people there around the square. I think half again, maybe more food trucks than there were previous year. About three hundred bicycle entries. Full day, big concert. Sold out kind of thing, I believe, or at least it wouldn't let people in. Anything else? Not, we'll move to, oh, might make mention that I don't know if you believe that Brazos River is crested, you said? They predicted to crest sometime this morning at somewhere close to twenty-seven feet. I have looked likely to see exactly what that crest was. I believe it should be on slope climb here on out through the week. I don't believe there's any forecast for rain in the area. So we're thankful that we didn't get any harder than we did.
Is that where it was a little? Did I hear you yet?
Well, I don't think that there was, there was a lot of rain there quick. I don't know that it'll ever get down here, really. And I don't think it'll make an impact on us if it does from the forecast that I've seen. Moving on to item number four, Senator County Clerk made his minutes for previous meeting. That'd be May twenty-third, twenty sixteen. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections needed, anybody? Not all entertaining motion to approve those minutes.
Still move.
Call in favor. Item number five, consider update on security pledge. Believe there's four plus million dollars in excess.
Four million seventy-three thousand nine hundred eighty-five sixty-four.
Approve?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Call in favor. Carry five. Number six, Ms. Otter, do you have any amendments?
No, no, we need a utility run last week that'll hold us till the next commissioner's.
Okay. Sure will.
Take.
No action there. Number seven, we have an employee bond. I think this filing purposes, I'm willing, this has already been carried by Stevens County.
Well, it's carried by juvenile probation. They pay for it, but we just always file it in our court.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve that filing?
Still move.
Call in favor. Carry five. Is that just a continuation of the bond? Item number eight, consider this latest expense reimbursement suit. It's failed from the historical commission fund. I think that's in here, a packet as well. For a hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
They have twelve thousand.
Uh?
They have twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars in their account.
Still move. Call in favor.
Up there with Austin Federal Restaurant, four government buildings.
Yeah.
And people who are coming by to visit are having a good time. And the cannon is attracting a lot of attention. And I think it's going to probably be a good sign for it.
Bring up that they did fire the cannon, started to fire.
Fire by.
Where'd he set up?
Went down to third con.
That's good.
So the quick lithium glass and sun buildings.
You did hear?
We didn't hear it before that happened. And we weren't listening. We didn't know we didn't go set up. If we had, we probably could have already.
I heard that.
But it was well heard down town, yeah.
Welcome up.
The back riders knew.
He wanted to shoot it at the finish, too. He wants to shoot it taller.
Yeah, he does.
He loves it.
What's their average cost every time you shoot?
The doctor gave us, I think, two hundred pounds of powder, so he's got plenty of shots to do it with. His only comment was they wouldn't let the police in.
Did he have, did he have any assistance there with you?
Yes.
Item number nine, is acknowledged jail inspection. We mentioned this last week, or the last meeting, but did not have the paperwork in for that to present. We discussed that a little bit, but we didn't have the paperwork there. Past inspection, a nice letter from Brandon Wood, the executive director of the jail commission, accolades to the county jail.
Thanks, sir.
Good work.
Since Eric's been there, it's really, it's good. Since Eric's been there, it's really changed the way we watch.
Good job, Major Brandon.
Thank you.
Along with that is a consideration and discussion of damaged sale windows. Those were indicated in the report to the jail commission. We've got Chief Deputy Big Dorf and the legislature, Eric Brown. I think we have a little battle here with that.
I made sure that everybody got a copy as well. This is of the cameras. Commissioner Wylie and I met with two different companies. And I got a third bid. The third bid was really no sense of it because he was a private contractor. And it was extremely, much higher than what we got on these two. As far as the windows go, we've narrowed it down to where we only have to replace fourteen windows. I have recontacted Sweeper Metal and Fabrication at Oklahoma, the company that Commissioner Prudin called earlier this year. That was a company that was going to charge us.
What, ten thousand dollars?
Two thousand dollars just to come out and measure the windows. I got back in touch with him and spoke to a little bit higher up. And they are willing to work with us on that to where maybe they waive that, come back out, measure the windows, because that's probably going to be the cheapest bid that we're going to be able to get as far as those windows. So hopefully, we can get that done in the next.
I remember Inspector similar response to me whenever we talked over the telephone. She didn't think we'd have to replace those windows in the exercise area.
Right.
Learned about it, been starting to get scratched at one of them, but we wouldn't have to replace.
And like I told Commissioner Wylie, we went over the ones out at the jail. And we had narrowed it down to fourteen. And she said she would be happy if, as long as we replaced those fourteen and kept it at a minimum price, then we would be okay.
Do they still have?
Yes, sir.
And I don't how they got those in there.
Lots of which have.
How'd you get the hole in the vehicle?
Hmm?
How'd you get the hole in the?
They had the hot.
Hot pots out there.
The hot pots have been.
It's a hole, hole in the window.
They continued to get hot pots until they had the holes closed, wasn't it?
No, they're not. They had before.
We don't have hot pots.
I.
But yes, sir.
That was a universal question.
Right. What they did is they would get some, they would get some form of metal, whether it be thin or anything that they could tear off or find, stick it in the hot pot, get it as hot as they can, and then stick it to the window until they just slowly, surely.
And just routine inspections, six to five. I'm sorry that happened, although there was no routine inspections. There you go. Yeah, okay. Item four.
But, like I said, we've, we've pretty much taken care of that problem. And with the cameras, we're going to be, we just, we received a new shipment of mattresses in because the old ones were from when the jail first opened up. We received them Friday. We're starting to hand them out today. Each inmate knows that they are going to be responsible for that cost-wise. And we can also punish them with criminal charges and disciplinary cases within jail. So we're slowly but surely trying to get all that stuff taken care of. But we, like I said, we minimized it to where we can get fourteen windows in there. And I think it's going to be a pretty reasonable price, as long as we just get this company to work with us.
But we don't know what that price is yet.
Not yet. I, I, they, we're supposed to come in back between, sometime between this afternoon and Wednesday. So hopefully, I'll be able to have a answer for you guys as soon as I can, so.
Hopefully, all we have to do is just take downs.
And they said, well, we'll take that off when they go with us. So I think it's kind of like, all right, we're going to let you pay us this price. Paying it, and you have to go with us.
Contract.
Yeah.
As far as the cameras go, the two companies we went with, and I know I'm not going to say this name right. Sadapic Inc., they are a company that's out of Waco. I met with them during the jail conference, asked them to come out. They came out, had a visit with myself, Mr. Wylie, went through. Their price is very reasonable. It's, I believe it's right at twelve thousand or a little over for all of them. But with that price, they're only going to give us twelve cameras. They're, they're good folks to work with. I got good, good reports from them, from everybody that I talked to. I talked to two references for them and two references for guardian. The only thing is, is the guard may give us more cameras, and it's still, after you average it out. Of.
More is better.
Exactly. The guard. We could get the. Two, more to you than that about the hybrid.
The hybrid is designed to where you can go either IP or. He's going to install what's kind of cameras or if we ever go.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
You know, we've got it.
You can record audio.
Inside the cell?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
True.
Yes.
They have it, they have it to. Or you can't see it.
Yeah.
Clear everything through just that.
Have a code to go by and whatever. They could deal with that.
That's good. We're going to stop a lot of incidents inside the jail.
Camera in, you've got. But in one camera, one out of those three would have microphone or the audio available. And they also are going to have a camera that's centrally located between the two cells to where it sees both doors.
Access, you, you can have blind spots on it?
No, sir, not with the three cameras.
I'm going to say you will have blind spots that you cannot see.
Yes, sir. In the bathroom.
Unless you have an access code to remove that screen.
Yes, sir.
Oh, so if there was a fight in the shower, you can see you're actually what happened.
Yes, he is.
But I understand that there was also legally limited access to that, other than company access cameras, camera company, person, software.
I don't, I don't have so much.
It can have limited access to a code that would take the screen down?
Yes, we have.
In S U, sorry.
Yes.
We're just, Major Brandon, going to clear something out of the code.
Right. The jailers would not be able to go in.
Jailers can't do that.
They would, they would only be able to monitor live while they're in control.
How long would it take them to figure out how they just buy a lab camera? Like if they.
Well, and that's, we're going to put up too, once we get these cameras installed, there'll be a, each inmate will sign, and there will be a sign in their tank. If anyone is caught tampering with the cameras at any point in time, they'll be having a disciplinary case, criminal case. Put on them.
And you'll have, sir, I mean, you'll see them.
Exactly.
And with, and with the mic in there, it will be he said, she said, he said, he said. It'll be exactly what they.
And what's going to happen is the first case that we run and find somebody, and they know we have audio and video. That's going to pretty much put a dent on everybody else because that'll pass on the fire.
Correct, there's just a.
Exactly.
There's a.
There's a map, and he goes to show you on the map there where he's going to put the tank, or where he's going to put the cameras in the tanks. We're going to start with just the back sales at first. It's called, it's called our desk wing and our trustee tank. We felt like the trustee tank was one of the most important spots because that's where your contraband's going to be coming in.
And one of the nurses.
And the nurse's station as well, yes.
Well, that's good.
And the one in the nurse's station is also going to be set where you can't see anything.
There'll be, there'll be, there'll be blind spots whenever they're getting examined.
The main thing is where they're going to be handing out the medications and all that stuff.
Exactly.
It's like if a fruit and.
Yes.
Yes, yes. And we checked with the nurse and the doctor on there, and they lay on tables, sit at that spot. They can do that. It's just when they're being examined is when you have to black them out.
There's currently, currently eight of them cameras in there.
Well, that's what they're saying. There's currently eight.
If you only find seventy.
Seventy-six.
Some of those cameras are, are actually down.
Yeah, well, I stood down and wondered if that would be the point ninety-one seventy-six.
And you say we've only got capability for eight cameras on our rack. And the bad part about this is, is when your jail gets built, nobody has a say in who gets, you don't get to choose the companies that you want to use. That company, Ryan.
I want you to act. Design, build, contract, and that was, obviously, they took the price as a bid, and they made recommendations that this court made by decision on the use.
But.
Were there three women or companies?
There were eighty more cameras. From our blueprint?
Our blueprint, that they installed eighty-one.
Yes.
They initially installed those cameras, the pantill zoom camera was supposed to be in the front part and one that's in the back. So the installer didn't follow their blueprint at all. Now we get to watch, you know, somebody getting gas or the.
Signed off the camera and stuff? Excuse me? In that, or even before it signed off on?
Well, all of that was reviewed during the building process, you know, and all of the.
So they found out eighty-one?
The recommendations on who, where we bought it, who installed it, and all that kind of business. This court made that final decision, but we relied heavily on the recommendations.
Contract.
But there physically, you were in there back.
I'm sure. According to the, according to the people that we've had look at that, that was the most expensive. Says no, it's a Bosch.
It used to be something like.
Says.
I'm sure that's.
Yeah, I probably have all the bills on that.
But one thing about.
Well, there's just a tip for them.
And nothing. The difference between the two companies is they're, they're both, they're both very qualified. I think Guardian specializes in this. And I think Guardian's probably had a little bit more professional facilities.
More well-known, too.
Yes.
That's the guards of red and butter, is Charles.
Good, good. That's who we have here in school now. He said we can take, after our years, our four-year contract is up, we got a year.
Sadapic did, you can, beginning of each budget year, you can sign a contract with them for preventive maintenance or whatever that is. And they're going to, they're going to give you a fee to where, unlike Argyle, to where Argyle comes out and says, okay, we're going to do twenty-seven minutes worth of work, and we're going to charge you travel time, hour time, delivery time, everything, to where the bill is astronomical. This company will keep it at an even kill to where you're paying pretty much, unless there's something.
I mean, they're at the conference.
Well, they're, they're pretty widespread already. They not only, they have schools, courthouses.
All kinds of. They've only got one office.
Well, I'm sure that they probably have multiple locations. I mean, but like I said, they, they specialize in doing their own stuff. They have, and Sadapic does too, but I don't think they do it at the level that these folks do. These folks have engineers, more than just one or two. They have an entire team of engineers that can just simply come up with a plan for you and say, here's what we think is the best thing. And they were very thorough in going through the jail, making sure where they wanted things and recommending to you, so. My preference would be if we had, if we had the choice, I would rather go with Guardian.
Guardian's got three different bids here.
Yes, sir. One is a hybrid bid, and one's the non-hybrid bid.
Same one. There's a little difference on where I guess the rad is, this sixty-four channel and this rad.
Well, what we want is that the fifty-five seventy-eight proposal, number one.
Last.
Yeah, last one. Fifty-five seventy-eight. You have one you're talking there.
Yes, sir.
So this is not the hybrid. But she said the hybrid would be better, she mean.
This has the.
Press compulsion raptors.
It's the same, both are the same.
Different, it's not much different.
One, he only gave us.
Well, the difference is, is the amount of cameras.
The NBR is after a quarter.
Yes, sir.
Is that me thirty-two channels and C H?
Yeah, yes. This here is a sixty-four.
Sixty-four, is that relevant?
That's a level of fashion.
Why did this Sadapic company just do twelve cameras, those seventeen cameras or the fourteen cameras?
That's what they said they wanted.
What we did was we gave them the option, we told them what we wanted, and we just let the company say, okay, this is what we want, this is the kind of views that we want. You give us a plan, and you give us a price of what we want.
And there's diamond coverage?
Yes, yes, sir.
Each one is on their own coverage.
I'll give you two thousand dollars. So they wrote their own specs then, which we didn't write.
No, sir. Just as, just.
I think the exact same kind of bid.
Just as Guardian did.
They did, they bid on what they decided, bid on not what we- I think they, they bid on solving the problem.
Yes, sir.
We gave them the problems and the cost that it cost us to solve this problem.
We didn't wanna tell them, we didn't wanna tell them, "Look, this is how much money we have to, to spend." We told them what we wanted to do, the location that we wanted to cover, and then we told them, "You give us a plan on what you think is best suited for our facility."
We didn't wanna tell them, "We need thirty-eight cameras," and they walk out, none, and those guys could do it for-
Twenty, or twelve, yes, sir, exactly.
See where it says here in the description, and the one that we're looking at, we're getting seventeen new IP cameras, is to the fourteen.
So, the hybrid cameras that Jim were talking about is two granted, or the regular cameras?
Well, the IP is probably a better, a better camera. Uh, the clarity of an IP is more clear than what they talk, talked like to us. The IP is.
And that's along the fifty-five, seventy-eight?
Yes. And then you're looking here, they've got, uh, four more of them at the, uh, with the mics and-
Are these all hardwired?
These will be used with the Cat five camera. Per, yes, where the other ones, they use a regular.
Regular.
Coax. Should be all hardwired.
Yes.
Did one wire with coax, one wire with Cat five?
The difference is, is clarity and-
That log addition.
The thing is, this will give us an opportunity whenever we decide to upgrade later on, there's other cameras to go away, so we can go ahead and start upgrading, put the, where the quality cameras in here.
I mean, it's that Guardian's got a courthouse, right? What we got here?
I think we've got, you run Cat five everywhere, didn't they?
Oh, I remember that.
Can't remember the total, I mean, we got here courthouse. But the cool thing about this is, is we've got that money, it's a grant, tower is, tack, the clarity is.
Pay for it, and then do that?
Yes. I think we're just right there, what is the total on that combined of two, it's twenty-two something, what?
Twenty-two, one ninety-seven, I believe.
Twenty-two, one ninety-seven.
Judge that one when we went out in that Jack for coffee.
People will get up.
So, we're all making our dollars, basically?
People will make it.
We'll pay it then.
During the room that day?
Yeah.
This is, this is, this part we're talking about.
We're gonna get the plan together, though.
Yes.
So, what will, they guard in that end of the day is eight hundred dollars?
We'll pay them all in tax and reimburse.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's pretty good.
That's a real right.
I think for now, they get their dollars more than they-
But the, the sixty-four channel rad, N V R, can that handle, that's the actual machine that records?
That's the D V R that records.
Can it handle more cameras, if we must add more cameras?
Yes, sir, what they would do is, as you need, the D V, the N V R would, would take care of sixty-four channels.
Sixty-four cameras?
Sixty-four cameras, sixty-four channels. I believe it is sixty-four cameras, so, and what you would do is, you would just add to that as you need.
Thirty-two channels, or it looks like?
Well, what we're, what we're-
Sixty-four, yeah, you expand it to sixty-four cameras.
Hundred twenty gig, right.
Like a home.
Yeah. And he said to take a kick out of the thirty days. Up to thirty days of construction.
What kind of being installed, instead of M V L lab, that's where the, be stored in the control room?
No, there's a room, a room that's-
M F D, yeah. Who has access to that room?
The D V Rs are?
There's only just two people. I believe there's forty, forty.
Was that back there where Eric?
I don't know.
Where we're all regular?
This is in the jail.
Sir? We're all regular equipment?
No, sir.
It's inside the jail, except for, it's got the access controls in it, and the D V Rs. And the functions, or the parts.
And a bonus to this as well is, that both of these companies can work on your doors, um, any of, any part of the system, any part of your control room, they can work on that, they can work on everything, so. The lock, the lock.
Ah, so I got this, I got this.
One of, one of the things that we're gonna do in the future is on the inside, we're gonna take it for, we can see. We've got some money left in, in language. Or if you can look in the control room, you, you working with a monitor this big right now?
Right.
We're gonna get it to where you've got three that surround, since it's a frame.
This makes sense.
And you can, still, the, the deal is, is what you use is having this many cameras, eighty cameras and plus, if you can only see this much, that'd be fine.
This much with each camera, and it's all, yeah.
That's not, that's not good, good business.
That's why we just try to-
If you could sit there, at least, this won't be touchscreen, this will be able to use a mouse control.
But the touchscreen, and both of them explained to us, touchscreen, you're gonna have a lot more problems, a lot more matrix on those than you ever would if you just chose a hand behind something.
I mean, I'm okay with that problem in the jail.
Yes.
So, what you actually do is, you can get them flat-screen TVs, and those are your monitors, and do it in a semi-circle right there. Where we're sitting there, you're controlling, and they can see more than you, what's going on.
Right.
One time, it just makes more sense.
A bigger TV? That makes sense.
Certainly, yes. No, or you've had, it's gonna be, it's gonna check it at least. Yeah, the control room is right here.
Did, uh, did look, see anything, like, links to the jail reports, inspections that they make, indicating cameras?
No, sir. No, sir, they did.
We can make them take that three hundred dollars off that monitor.
Mm-hmm.
That they've got on that one. The rug is nineteen inch, that's too small.
Sure.
Eric, is it, is it ins蚀 there, too?
We don't, we don't have, we have no cameras in the seg sales, no. The only camera that we have is actually in the bottom.
You don't think it's the bottom?
There could, I mean, because-
I do.
If you have a hang, that's where it's gonna be.
I agree, wholeheartedly, but at the same time, if we have them in safe, we've got it torn out, if they are, any danger, if they, if they show any kind of danger of hurting themselves or anybody, we will end up taking everything away from them, or all they have is the bare-
You just don't know? You really don't?
Exactly.
I mean, you blow off, blow your hat off when you walk out this building, like man, Eric was such a reporter.
Well, only two-
You don't know, you put somebody in there with-
Right. What, what we're hoping is, is this deal with TAC, if they will do it again next year, like what, and that's what he talked about in our meeting, that this could be an ongoing deal. And this is, this is, this is the first time that they've done this, and they're trying this to see how successful it is. They give them X amount of dollars to distribute over X amount of counties, that does business. And our whole theory is, is, is if we can get this started, next year, if they do it, we're gonna head, maybe in the seg sales.
Seventeen more cameras.
Seventeen more cameras.
But he did say-
Exactly.
A lot, a lot of the unit play out.
Sure.
In saving, but-
Exactly. But that, I think this right here is gonna cut down on metal, and we'll cut down on some other things.
Some of those pots.
Can save it behind, too?
Yes.
Right. Especially when you see somebody fall off a bed. Can you go to the video on the audio?
Somebody's been knocked that guy.
Mm-hmm. Thank, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept proposal five, five, seven, eight for Guardian.
Well, this contingent on the project being-
It's a good contingent on, on the project. So, what we've got to do is, is we're gonna have to, I think, continue on doing one right.
Just that deal.
Well, we've talked about that.
Okay.
Okay.
You brought me the paperwork to fill out, so I, I'll wait here for you guys.
Well, we've got, maybe we better, we better wrap this up.
Right. Let me finish my motion, just, I, I, my motion is to accept Guardian's proposal for five, five, seven, eight. We do get this grant for twenty-two thousand.
Seven dollars a change.
We've, we've got it. Just gotta do it?
We just got, uh, heard these in.
Yeah, I've got, yeah, Marshall, I've got it.
I have the same compilation that we've got.
Because why is that?
Contingent that we do this, contingent that we do this, we accept this proposal.
I'll second that. Jesus.
Yeah.
See it?
Yes.
And then they give to them, and they give back.
We're gonna get that in here, this, we're giving this way.
You have that tack in the Jack coffee case, you got everything you need, and about his number, you got it as well.
To combine them, they're both, both sheets.
I guess that's what that, do we?
Explain our intent to combine, because he approved, was to combine those.
Buy both of them.
Okay, so that's making up that it's about a-
Tag?
Yes, sir. Sex, sex category, that's right.
July first?
July first is in. I've been in there before, the deadline's on. What'd be nice is, is there's a lot of those, a lot of those in the county did, didn't, didn't dispatch.
Sure, sure.
Maybe they'd give up some more money.
Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Prudential, Second Commissioner Prudential, the motion to read, to approve Guardian's proposal number five, five, seven, eight, uh, for jail cameras, the addition of jail cameras pending award, TAC grant program. Anything to add to that? On the paper?
So, how do you run that?
I'm gonna pull that, because I don't believe that everybody had the same bids, facts. They're beating on their own proposals, so, I don't, I don't think, I'm just gonna force that, and that's what I'm standing for. Pass it to one, ten. With regard to the windows, pricing, the bid, we don't have that pricing yet, so.
Or, unless table left.
Till we proceed, no action. We'll move that forward till we have pricing on that. Okay. Out of number ten, eleven, and twelve, there's kinda go hand in hand with one another. Consideration of the disposition of certain electronic equipment to be of no value, and orders such items destroyed is applicable in accordance with two sixty-three, one fifty-two, local government code. Eleven, item number eleven is additional or other electronic equipment declaring, or those as surplus property, and those items to be auctioned or donated is applicable with two sixty-three, one fifty-two, local government code also, and item number twelve is findings in the court that's in your package of review. If it's such that you agree with that order is stated, I think we'll, we'll just take all three of those items together. The order kinda just defines each eleven anyway.
So, then what do you do with this equipment? What do you do with this electronic equipment? I mean, like an old computer, you could donate some of it.
But you donate it to a, a not-for-profit organization.
If it's, I mean, we're talking about destroying them, or like that.
Why often they need to be destroyed? Yeah, some of them may be destroyed with the hard drives.
Well, all the hard drives.
What we're talking about is hard drives.
Yeah, all these.
Hard drives.
Yeah, we've destroyed all of them.
I would- Sensitive information.
If you have-
Somebody's doing a technical computer inspection, just take them apart, does with the pieces that-
That's what I'm asking. I mean, we have sold computer equipment that auctioned out there, folks, that's not worth hardly carrying that.
The, the order reads, Commissioner Scott of Young County likes these findings applicable to provisions of L G C two sixty-three, one fifty-two, A, one, two, three, four, and A B C. That Young County has certain electronic items that are non-functional and are without value, and that may contain sensitive data, and we order those items destroyed. Other, Young County has other certain electronic items, the court finds that they're surplus property of no further deed to Young County, and may be disposed of as applicable to L G C two sixty-three, one fifty-two, A, one, or four. A, one is, uh, it'll be sold, auctioned, A, four is, they don't hand it to some not-for-profit organization.
So, what? Second, then.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
In other words, the intent of that is, sort those items. Do have bags, either put in that auction, or they don't have to sell them.
Can I ask you something, Simon, go ahead, it's for the, just for us.
On the paper? Here, file it.
Well, I'm getting frustrated, first of all, we have a casual pool of chemicals that we've bought over the years, and we've got money, that's all, jars, cans, bottles, hazardous liquids. Some of them are not so old, I don't know if they're very good, aerosol spray cans on the air. All right, I can't just, once again, with the county's money, I can't just throw them in the trash. There are also hazardous liquids, I can't just dispose of them. Do we need to get someone in here and write up an order like this to dispose of any of those kind of elements in our precincts that are no longer in use, and get rid of them with hazardous materials?
Personally. Well, they, probably they don't have any gateways.
Find a way to do it. What, what's in it? Uh, additives, transmission additives, fuel additives, uh, lubricants, moly greases, uh, even some insecticides, uh, just cases of stuff that is right there, and just, some of them just leak down around the seal of the can. Well, if you still need video, there's space that we could use.
Well, I, I think what you could do with that is, is all the stuff that has oil-based product, any transmission oil-based product, put all that in a fifty-five gallon drum.
Okay, we'll, we'll turn it.
Put it in the wastel, or wherever you got, comes by, so your wastel out, you can send out the-
That's what I do.
That would make sense.
The valves and stuff. Shocking.
I think it's huge, right? But that's what I, I would do. And of course, the moly greases, you got something to grease that.
Once a while, there's a lack of social programs that comes around, allow, I'll bring, I'll take, bring their hazardous chemicals that have been on over age, or that are outdated, or something like that, and to dispose of them right now. I think that's a Texas part of the lack of social program.
I'll check with Justin.
Will, uh, probably can dispose.
There's something hanging out there that contains some herbicides and insecticides that the county used to spray. Even got barrels of packaging out there, so to sort of. So just need to clean that stuff up, get it out of there, just make it a mess. But then, oh, it's actually got it rid, because once again, it has, it's had the values of the county, which tax fairly to buy, you know? We can't just throw it in the public trash.
Check with DCEQ out there, same, and the Texas Department of American Social Program. They didn't have that program, it come, coming around periodically, and, uh, you can dispose of them.
Should I get it up? I like peppered mine.
See, interlocal, take your essence, does. Agreement.
Sir, um, that proposed agreement, the interlocal agreement. Archer County, uh, do I have the? Um, speed route was not compatible at the up there, so. Overdial.
Uh, key center.
Yeah.
It's on the dash anymore.
It was my.
It's a mayhem.
Good question. Is that prompts another question? Is this an exclusive contract, interlocal? Exclusive to, does it exclude? Does exclude all others except, you know?
Tarrant County.
So I'm actually.
For Tarrant County, neither is the only participating.
Yeah. Well, us entering into this, does it prevent us from?
Shopping?
Well, Tarrant County has, has a, a special right through GM to receive these vehicles, so I'm sure if.
So it's actually through GM, but those people are just delivering deals?
That's correct. Well, is this also through the reliable? Yes, that's true. He is facilitating this.
Through GM.
Or.
Reliable's a white right, right?
Well, according to this, according to this, there's now two counties right now.
Yeah, one of them's involved.
Involved in there.
It's on the, I've got it.
That's possibly, probably forty dealerships involved in those counties.
You know, but if you wanted to get into that field, then Young County needs to, at least, yeah.
Businesses need to contact.
Basically, what these guys are gonna be doing is, is they're, they're gonna be doing it the Walmart way, they're, they're gonna be getting the money on the backside at the end of the year. Yeah. Yeah.
I just want to make sure that our local businesses, I'm sure that we're not going to rent it anyway by anybody else. We're not buying these vehicles.
We're leasing vehicles. But again, I've reiterated that we are not buying, that it was a lease situation, in our leasing company, at bottom line, it's one who buys the vehicle and then leases to us.
But for us?
Just because there's a way for us to find a way that they make a dispute.
So. Is this saying price?
Getting the buy on here.
Is this saying price, not, not already, already available?
No, sir.
It's not. How was supposed to, the former proof, reliable?
Reliable gave us the initial quote using the Tarrant County interlocal agreement pricing.
That's how Billy got it.
Exactly. Said, this, you have to be a part of this if you want to purchase on it, just like we did with that man last year.
Then we want to purchase, we need to sign that.
We have to.
Come on, man.
Be a part of it.
Till we get that.
And the next go-round, it might be a completely different agreement with somebody else that gets a better.
Well, I guess I missed that, but like, certainly, previous discussion regarding this.
I mean, everything that Billy brought is through Reliable.
Yeah.
Well, I know it's through Reliable.
I don't mean to say that, I, I see where we're at. His wasn't through his, wasn't through Defender.
I didn't realize it was tied to Tarrant County. On the price.
What's kind of like this?
We've gone through Reliable's, Sherlock.
Instead of Byboard or Smart By?
Through the same gentleman that we're working with right now. One thing, last year, we had, we had, or last time we did this, we had to go through the Smart By. That was, that was whatever agreement, that was the cheapest. So you were responsible for the Reliable deal?
Yes, sir, I was. And I was too.
Judge, trying to get at is, is how do we get that deal, we might have to go into the contract, now we have to go into the contract.
That what you're gonna say, basically?
Well, it's not.
Listen, we're, we're.
Look vocal, right?
Yeah. We have executed one deal with Tarrant County before, never ever else.
Well, evidently, what happened prior to this, is that other deal, the Smart By, was the cheapest deal that time.
Yes.
This time, Tarrant County deal was the cheapest deal.
Right.
So it's where the cheapest is tied, to do the quote.
We can go through.
Another dealership, White Route, and you used to build through White Route, or you get some.
I've only had experience with the Fender supply and Reliable, that's the only.
That's what we used to do.
Yeah.
They don't want that place. You know what? The White Road. Have a question.
Yeah, we had the, we've gotten something one time ago, um.
I mean, they have.
Wasn't defended, was it?
No, I don't think it's Defender, Joe.
No, it's not, please.
It says, Young County, you're basically, uh, reading this blank document, Young County, Texas agrees that all specifications for selected items be determined by Tarrant County. Young County, Texas agrees to pay the supplier for all goods, equipment, products pursuant to this agreement. The successful bid, bidder, or bidders shall bill Young County directly for all items purchased, and Young County, Texas shall be responsible for vendor's compliance with all conditions of delivery and quantity of purchased items. It doesn't say anything about us leasing anything in here, so.
No, sir. And?
Go ahead, sir. You know, I, I guess I, I question that a little bit, um.
Our.
If y'all don't want to participate in this interlocal to receive a better price, we can always go somewhere else.
Well, I just beg, just beg some questions there, or. Are they gonna bill us, then we, we, we bind them?
Can you talk to the purchasing agent?
I'm, I'm speaking with Mr. Adams, who is the purchasing agent for Reliable, and he's going to build through Billy. So American National Leasing will be buying. Well, they'll be leasing.
Leasing the vehicle.
They'll be buying and leasing by the place you guys, yes.
And I know the, I know the purchasing agent of Tarrant County, and I can call him, but I'm sure it's.
Why?
You wouldn't have all these counties doing it if they weren't getting.
The discussion here basically does question.
I should think Texas Department of Wildlife are participating in this, so, I mean, it's.
It's a big deal. Big deal. Purchases is higher than numbers.
That's why it's a better deal right now.
Should the agreement be effective till, from, from the day of execution until termination date of partying, the agreement to the agreement upon thirty-day notice prior cancellation?
And this same interlocal might be that everyone's benefited later on down the line, y'all choose to, just Chevy trucks, or these Chevy trucks in the future, so. It would give you another option to do lots of leasing.
In other words, this interlocal agreement might be read maybe every year, it stays that way until it's signed up out of it.
There's a lot of counties involved in this.
And I guess it's our choices, we use it. If you have it, use it fine, if you don't.
I mean, what, what does it matter if we enter into it, it don't bound us to anything?
Well, and it's gonna help us on the price. Do you term our choices over to Tarrant County?
No.
No, sir. We don't, we are not obligated to.
No, it's not obligated.
Ever since.
Young County, Texas hereby makes constitutional points, Tarrant County, it's true and lawful purchasing agent for purchase of various commodities using annual contracts or bids. Tarrant County will maintain a, will maintain a listing of annual contracts which are available for local entities' use. Tarrant County will forward a copy of the requested annual contract to the requesting entity. Young County, Texas agrees that Tarrant County shall serve as the purchasing agent for selected items, and agrees that the bidding shall be conducted by Tarrant County according to its usual bidding procedures, and then, of course, with that, of state statutes.
They already, they've already placed the bid and, and have the contract with GM, and those are the fixtures y'all haven't done.
Yeah, I understand that.
But it don't, it don't bound us to that, because let's say, like Jimmy wants to buy a new vehicle for his, his precinct out there, he can go, look, they can buy one, and no one said we have to go to Tarrant County to buy one.
Early people that.
Only if you use this binder.
Right, exactly.
Did you know that model, that equipment?
Right now, this is just for these two vehicles, is up.
And, and if you have. Care about sports player here. I don't think it hurts to.
I mean, if you have a question about it, I think we should, Ted will ask Chris, let him read it, and say what he thinks.
I don't much be questioning about who's gonna be the owner of the vehicle, who's gonna be American National Leasing, or it's gonna be on county.
It's gonna be American National Leasing.
Reason, until we.
Till we, we decide it out right, or?
And that's why they.
Trade it the next time that we trade it.
Okay, you know, save the billing?
It will be a minute before the billing, yes. Billy's been on all the email, right? Everything else, so it's, we're all familiar with how we're gonna operate this.
I mean, it's like when two of these graders, we own it, they're gonna have to lease it owns it, though.
It's like what Billy said when he's here, it depends on what, what Smart By or which they're waiting for to buy it.
I discussed this with Billy's office last week, and he, it should play, we're talking, American National Leasing owns the vehicles, we're leasing to us.
Yeah, right.
I told him, I explained to the local business that we were leasing the vehicles through American National Leasing, and that they're the ones that ask for bids, or out for bids to give, or, and the companies that bid were part of this group, were qualified to bid on these, and they're gonna want to check into being a part of that bidding group.
I make a motion to bill for Tarrant County.
Second, man.
So you're making a motion that we enter into this interlocal agreement?
Interlocal group, we have a purchase of two vehicles.
Want to do information, if I might, that will mean that if we enter into this interlocal agreement with them, that we can use it for additional purchases, however it may be that is a benefit to us. You're just getting the contract price.
You don't think how many vehicles are Tarrant County buying?
Well, the camera's on there, selling kind of on there.
Wow. To me, it looks like it's between, uh, American Bank and.
Well, next year, maybe. Texas interlocal agreement doesn't allow for private businesses on our, our campus.
I mean, you got.
So American National Leasing does this representative of ours.
I would agree with, if we're actually gonna buy a vehicle, we're gonna not buy a baby.
Actually, I was gonna tell you, it's off from Young County, it's a bid. I said, you asked us to do it, actually.
Well, what, I, I obviously believe, uh, American Leas, uh, National Leasing is wanting to finance over vehicles. Great, well, this is.
You do not get titles.
That all works out right.
On those vehicles, right?
Yes.
So, because if we were purchasing, we would get a non-divisional title showing in the legal, but the title's stayed there in their name until they pay for it, and they sign it over to us.
It's no different than our graders, what we're doing, it's no different with our graders.
Okay, I hope y'all were correct on that. Hope we're correct on anything. Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Wiley, second commissioner, to enter into an interlocal agreement, Tarrant County, with purchase of two, um, SOV, Sheriff's Office vehicles. Is that registered status or not?
For leasing.
Another point, if I might, that in the motion for purchase of two Sheriff's Office vehicles? Means we have to revisit it again, if there's anything else outside that?
Or not, purchasing, leasing.
For the use of leasing, okay, before we lease them.
Before we do anything else, is that gonna limit the?
Actually, what the agreement does is it makes Tarrant County a purchasing agent for Young County.
If they have a agreement, they're not gonna participate in buying, you know, they won't.
That's great.
Question. Question.
This one's, they were only for request, it's two there.
That's right.
Interlocal, like that read, interlocal purchasing agreement?
Leasing.
Leasing. Believe one, the lease is always a purchase. Depends on who's purchasing.
Okay. Section number one, after the resolution, says, Young County, Texas hereby makes, constitutes a points, Tarrant County, it's true and lawful purchasing agent for purchase of various commodities using annual contract bids. Like that read, um, to enter into a, um, interlocal purchasing agreement, Tarrant County for the, uh, various commodities. Okay, change of heading. Now it states, hereby makes, constitutes points, Tarrant County, it's true and lawful purchasing agent for the purchase of various commodities using annual bids.
I'm hoping for approval of this interlocal agreement, but if there's questions after we conclude this meeting, we don't have to purchase these vehicles using this agreement.
Exactly.
But if you want to.
I don't think so, but to me, I still think this to go through American Bank and Sheriff Lake.
It can't.
Dealerships. If this is gonna be a lease, this is not a purchase.
Well, we're purchasing this through them, through the contract.
Purchase.
So that they can take.
Vehicles.
Well, but you're still on.
At least, you still have options.
Turns, Tarrant County, again, we're purchasing, how we pay for them.
Yeah, we're there, Alan, it's. We're leasing through the bank.
Right.
We're leasing through the bank, we're not ever bound, you know?
These other titles on these vehicles, Sheriff? Do we have leased through them, do we ever have a title on them?
No, Billy keep, Billy keep.
We never did enter into any interlocal agreement, uh, that I recall with regard to that, except with American National Leasing, through, through the lease contract.
But Billy will be holding the title, I mean, he'd be holding this title.
Okay, what do we buy, do that one place before, that other participation, it's the usual?
Like Byboard? Those motor graders.
We use Byboard, we'll use another one, there's another one before that's the vehicle.
Yeah, I remember what you're talking about.
Yeah. But, but all we're doing was just, was allowing them to be able to get that price, the contract price.
Even with Byboard, it's just kind of using their contract, but yet, everything is ironing. Even with by board, it's just kinda confusing their contract, but yet, everything is our deal and our money.
Okay, on the favor? Okay.
Our motor grader deals not accidentally leased, neither does, it's just got a big balloon payment at the end of that lease period, or it's one dollar. Freezing where you only paid one dollar.
That's the same thing as vehicles, they're lease purchased too, and we paid two of those off there last month.
This bid, Phil says twenty sixteen, are we getting twenty seventeen? Yes, sir, you're getting twenty seventeen.
Yeah, it says that the.
Is it not a lot of email?
I think we're still questioning that it's.
Well.
I sent all the emails.
The cutoff date was four twenty one for sixteens.
I think.
The cutoff date, so these are gonna be seventeens.
Yeah, I know, but you buy seventeen, but at what price, they were gonna give us the sixteen prices.
Exactly, that's what they said, they guaranteed this for the seventeen prices on these.
Great news, this is great news, we will need the Rotary Doll four before and the Keen century, I am waiting on calls to be used to finalize this. He will be responsible for financing, I will have him correspond with you in the meantime, we can get the upgraded quote with the four mentioned add-on. I got official word this morning, this is. Is this you to him?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to catch up to where you're heading here.
Okay. I'm on page five. Cause I got official word this morning, I will be able to fulfill your request. GM has extended my transaction pricing for twenty sixteen models to twenty seventeen models at this time. Yeah, this is, this is Doug, he made it to you. The GM. I will leave some type of PO to get this moving for you.
So the quotes we have, right, five eighty quotes, two twenty seventeen.
Price, pricing twenty sixteens are extended to twenty seventeen. Page five, right at the bottom counter, page five. Okay.
You have a good copy of the interlocal sign, don't you?
Excuse me?
Don't you have one printed out to sign on?
There you go.
It's nice, call it, okay, cool.
I've got all. Go off, say the sign please. Just call for the entity on buying title date. I'm gonna sign Jim Bidor. Okay. I'll feel wrist that out. Okay, item number fourteen, discuss considering burn restrictions, anybody want to restrict anybody to burn anyone? No action. And no start anything when they can get in there fast, please. We just have to let it burn again, thanks, Paul.
Coming off the highway?
Coming off, huh, travel, times, yeah. Yeah, for a good while, matter of fact, the bicycle, the cross bicycle, the water, the hay was just. Another, another one of this thing.
Item number fifteen, budget workshop, that's the, any matter of budget development for it by seventeen. I think the authors, you guys.
Your woman.
Do you have anything?
I have these to hand you up, you know, so you can hand.
I think y'all, since y'all believe the estimated. Any value you have. For that, working all over.
I've printed out our work copies to start working on.
One.
This is the beginning, this is the beginning, I didn't skip pages, so they'd be smaller.
This is Colonel.
Printed out everyone's, I have a budget request. I'd like for y'all to have some. Homework this week in.
I'd like to welcome in members of the public, they'd like to come to these hearings, do please show up.
Happy anniversary.
All of them, everything that I turned in, I didn't put anything into the payroll costs regarding.
And I didn't go through and add anybody's anything, I'd like for y'all, if you would like to see the, the work ones or up today, you can see what has currently been spent, what was budgeted. And there's some lines that look kinda crazy. Sir.
Yeah, these today.
I did it today, at the top of the date. If you would go through and I know there are expense lines, revenue lines, whatever, if you have any questions about any of them, if you'll write down that account number. Get it to me this week, we'll work on budget next week, I will pull those lines and we can see what was received or extended out of those lines, it might help to explain a lot, cause sometimes there's. Things paid out like roofs, which makes it kinda go crazy or. Yeah, I know. Insurance repairs, but then we'll see in the revenue line, it'll be up there, so anything that, any line you see, if y'all will.
Talking to Cheryl about if you buy a piece of used equipment and add additional equipment to it, additional equipment gets added in as repairs to the equipment, so it's changed to the repair line.
And then with the three fifty one.
So the water tanker truck that we love, that we replumb and put a pump engine on and things like that, shows up as repairs to that piece of equipment, so my equipment repairs list.
You need to do your equipment repairs.
Yeah, when it really should be part of the inventory of my equipment.
Well, it's an improvement, an improvement to it, you would say, it's always gets to the table. Yeah, I would say where that, I would go in, where it's prepared maintenance.
It's modified to be used for your personal free to use. Hopefully buy.
What is?
The chassis cap. And put a bed on it.
Yeah, we don't usually do that until the end of the year. The courthouse, the area.
No, I don't, actually, because of the cost of individual lives.
We wait for all the clerks to like pass through money from their reports all during the year and at the end, then we move. From that accounting to the budget.
And you know, we put twelve thousand this year to go into the revenue, so.
Cause I think the rates.
It can be added to the cost of the regional truck.
Yeah, any of those, the ones that have like the court reporter and.
Sorry, I'm sure they have a truck, would not show a flat made truck.
Well. Rest of the way, I had no. Bomb tail, I had no tractor truck truck.
The court reporter is the same thing.
Yeah, it goes in there, what do we, all of us.
I bought the, I bought the bed installed, took the truck to, to digger and they installed it.
Okay, sure, make sure.
Is that become part of the unit?
Sure, once these.
Is that a repair hose? No, that was, that was in.
Why? And I'm gonna keep a few extras.
Weapon provisions when we go this way.
Weapon.
Write your name on it, I wrote my name on it.
No, we don't, we plan to do what that was.
Well, like this.
Okay, we bought this thing, we still have to do it, and we said it often had some stainless steel flages welded to it, so that we could.
Yeah, we, we could give it back.
Get water, or maybe we wanted to use it.
But it go back that line there, I'll pull it out.
Yes, cause I, I didn't.
But it's still part of the system, it's part of the equipment.
That works fine, that.
If you included all of those feeding things.
But it included, it didn't include all of it. So if I had an eighteen thousand pound winch to one of our chargers, that's gonna be a repair.
How much, how much money are you talking about?
Oh, yeah, thousand bucks.
I can't remember what we did, the quarter set a, a price figure on items some time ago, I can't remember if it was five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars to inventory in hindsight, so. If, if you bought a piece of equipment that was, that cost a thousand dollars, it's gonna be inventory independently, people don't like being part of another unit. It'll be inventory independently from that, I don't remember what, do you remember what that picture was?
So when the fire department's ringing out a fire truck, everything that ain't on it is repaired.
I don't know how they do that, I know this is just how we.
I think in surveillance, I think you.
All he does, that is the big equipment, big equipment, he doesn't care what you got on it.
So all of the, all the sheriff's department's equipment's been stuck on that thing, I forget, is all gonna be part of the vehicle, or is it gonna be repaired?
We pay.
We're changing over the ages, radio.
Yeah, we pay it out of there because it's the lease payment.
I, no, it will be, cause it'll be part of the vehicle.
We all know, I tell them, we should, we all know how weird that is. We'll have a lease.
How, how it's handled, make the vehicle work. I think it'll all be included in our, put it in. A trailer. Trailer, it'll be worth another eight hundred bucks.
No, it's not on here, actually.
If you spend a thousand dollars on that winch on a bike, it's gonna, it's gonna all be a thousand bucks.
Look what it is, it's.
You tell me to write that down there.
Repair line in the name of this year, it's forgotten, you don't know?
Well. I don't know what's different just on my, our equity in the lease never shows up.
Yes, yes.
Value of which. Last year's.
So that, yeah.
We'll talk about it here, but I just wanna make sure that my budget is.
I was looking at, here's what we've done, we've already gotten a lot more than that.
They prove the city. Like repair wise, it's gonna be in the.
But like you hear on this, we'll do interest, but to that, we really got that much, and we'll get a little bit, we haven't gotten all the stuff.
Building value and it's.
This one.
Just getting started.
Who said that?
We're not gonna be in the budget, correct? This is last year's, huh? Or this year's?
Y'all want a pump is.
I do need a toilet.
I have. There's a few I, I don't have, I think I don't have the district attorney yet. Jimmy's yet, but I gave y'all now, he's got the one he had in practice. And I told him, I said. Stacy gave me his, they might gave me his.
Are you here, did they have you, have you did?
So many of Jimmy's slackers.
It's nothing new, though. Are we still stringing this up?
We're gonna do nothing, they'll be gone. I guess, I hope. Is there, is there any matter that somebody can bring up regarding the budget, if construction or?
No, the thing here on our approvals is approximately twenty-three percent below it, twenty, twenty percent below last year's figure.
And maybe not hardly that bad, you have the estimated value, and then about a week later, I got a revised that I think I'm. Doing also, so you've got those, but it does look like it comes revenue. Probably gonna be down seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. Based upon our current tax rate and what our value's gonna be, and obviously, it's going to adjust our effective rate. Where it balances that, you know, and that, that'll increase that, that'll increase that rate. People see that, that it will appear it will be a substantial increase in rate, but it won't be an increase in dollars to the individual taxpayer. Time to come, we're gonna tell you if they're gonna, we're gonna tighten our belts a little bit more. Be a little lighter on it. They always do.
Always do.
But it is gonna be, it is gonna be tough with regard to rate and funding, tax rate funding. Got that done? You're fine fishing.
What time are we meeting next Monday, have y'all decided?
Uh, Monday will be at nine AM, uh, nine thirty, maybe, is it? That's, that's a great.
And it'll be budget workshop every, every.
I, I got tempted to send that out, I suspect we may have some presentations next Monday. Lauren was there for a few days, she wanted to try to get one of our representatives up here to explain her circumstances with regard to.
She might not be able to talk to me anymore. No, it's just it's. Kinda pushed out there.
Well, sounds like maybe not be available, we may have it tomorrow, November, October election. Well, sounds like maybe not be available, we may have it tomorrow, November, October election. It kind of, I mean, don't want to get everybody's hopes up, but it sounded kind of promising, a little bit emotional, but then.
Probably at that last conference, they told those other people that are going to buy some shit, or not, get anything for their own shit.
Yeah.
But they know, we did that pretty sweet five.
I think all the equipment is delivered.
Does she get those all QPS away?
Well, I think so. And what is our expense, they pay for all the shipping. It hasn't already gone, I suppose, planned on happening.
How many motions did you hear?
You think you can get a majority vote on that?
I don't know.
You've got to get a second party.
I said about five minutes ago. Do what? I'll say.
Is there anybody opposed to that?
Ain't none, I don't.
No opposition.
So what do you draw the number fifteen, just not, we're not doing anything?
Excuse me?
What do you draw the side with the number fifteen?
I'll postpone until Monday.
Number fifteen, what is that?
What is?
Budget workshop.
We handed out budget requests.
Hand out the budgets that are.
We have homework.
About to take calls.
Cheryl has got work to do.
Budget request.
Anywhere we go.
That's anyway, he's always got an idea of something.
Yes, he does.
You ready for that?
I know, it's too late.
I think what we're about to do, guys, on this building maintenance, where it talks about here, replacing windows, we've got forty-three thousand in that deal. I can't see why we can't see what we can get to windows, or if we can't get partial payment out of this year's budget, so we won't have to add to next year's budget.
We got some money in this year's budget, bud?
Yes, and we need to, of course, we need to fix the cameras that need to be fixed, and then whatever left out of that deal we can use on the windows. Or we could buy X amount of windows out of them, it may be enough to do it.
I said with our current valuation, or our new valuation, and our current tax rate, it will be about a hundred thousand. Somebody probably will be writing this, but somebody else can read the writing. That turns out.
Huh?
That turned out.
No.
I don't need it.
Right there on the edge.
Here?
Yeah. That old top everything.
Got it.
Then power button's right on the front, with that little box there right up here on the front of it.